So, welcome to the town board meeting. It is October 22nd. This is a special meeting because we're going to be having a presentation about the 2015 budget and we're very excited about that. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you for coming on this not-so-nice October night. In about 15 minutes, maybe even before then, we're going to start looking together at the 2015 budget. One of the things that the town board has said for a long time is the exciting thing about the budget process is that the budget becomes a planning document for the year ahead and sometimes for two and five years down the road. And that's more important now than ever, so I hope that everybody will enjoy the presentation. I thank Debbie and Ann for putting this together for us and helping us best understand it. On the agenda, it talks about this happening at 7:45, but I think it's fine. Do you have a -- you don't have a clerk's report, do you?
No.
Okay. So, we'll go into announcements and I guess I'll start with Jim Ross to see if he has any.
I do not, Sue.
Okay. Harry, have you any announcements?
I do not.
Okay, and Bill?
No.
Okay, just to reiterate that what we said last week, last meeting, the Rotary sponsored their Citizen of the Year and our Chair of the Rec Commission was honored as Rotary Citizen of the Year last night and it was a fantastic party and well-deserved for Doug Strawinski. I think everybody had a great time at the firehouse and we're very, very proud of him and his family. Nikki was there, spoke highly of her husband, as women tend to do sometimes, and the children spoke, friends spoke, and it was, it was just a lot of fun. That's a great, great event. And Chris is President of Rotary, Christine Shaw, this year. It was, it was well-done, the food was good. Thank you for --
I really appreciated all the support from the community.
Thank you for doing it. I wanted the board to know that there will be a meeting of the Association of Towns on November 11th. That is Election Day, but they've chosen to do it that day, so if anyone wishes to go with me to that Board, Association of Towns, Supervisors and Mayors, I'm sorry, not Association of Towns, Supervisors and Mayors. It's being held, as it has been, in Millbrook and starts at, I think, 6:30. And we always come away with some things, so if any of you are interested in going, I'd love to have company. I think that's about it for me for tonight, other than to remind everybody that November 1st is the very first Red Hook Chocolate Festival. And there are going to be activities at the Almondorf and variety of things going on in all the shops in Red Hook, and we hope everybody will set aside the November 1st date because it's, it's a fantastic first planned event and there are lots of activities. And I think this is going to be an annual event that we'll all be proud of. Okay, is there any public comment before we get started? There are guests here? Not at this time? Okay. All right, so let's get started. While we said the public hearing would open, it's not against our principles to open early, is it?
Well, you can certainly make your presentation.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, let's do that. Let's, let's walk through the presentation by looking at the budget that is up on the screen. Can you see it well enough, for Panda's sake?
We'll do our best.
Okay, you'll do, you'll do your best. Okay. So, as I said, we've, we've worked hard at getting a budget that is under the cap, and I want to talk a little bit about that because it's, it's a real struggle. And those of us who have been working on budgets for a long time know that this year and next year and the following year are going to all be challenges that I'm not sure how we're going to meet, frankly, because each year is going to be, have its own individual quirks to it, I'm sure. We talked about increases, we talked about decreases, we talked about where we saw growth, where we saw areas that we needed to pull back, where we have to save. And so this is an attempt through, through visuals to show you where the appropriations for 2015 are. So if you'll just follow those charts, I think the pie chart, while we have it in figures, the pie chart is pretty instructive. The General A Fund is the fund, all funds, that include those expenditures for the village. And you'll see that in purple on the far right. The amount that is in this budget for 2015 is 1,772,948. And that's 41% of the budget. In the General B Fund, which is those expenses that are only outside of the village. And that would include our building inspector, for example, who covers the areas outside of the village. The village itself has its own building inspector, so those charges are billed to the village budget. But that's an example, but not the only one. Going around clockwise, so that's the, it looks gray up there and in our sheet it looks blue, but the amount of money for outside in the B Fund is $624,189. And that is 14% of the budget. The Highway DA Fund is $18,760. And that's a very, as you can see, a very small slice. And that is zero, actually. It's so insignificant, it doesn't even show as a percentage. Would somebody like to talk about the DA Fund and why we separated out? Debbie, you want to give it a shot?
Well, that, the DA Fund historically was used to account for bridges. And because we had such small --
Please, let's not ask.
We had no bridges for many years, so it was like a fund that was not being used. Well, all of a sudden, we had the hurricane damage to our bridges, we borrowed money to repair the bridge. This reflects principal and interest payment that we're going to be making on that bridge loan.
Okay. Good, thank you. So it's an infrastructure expense, okay. Now, going around, you'll see a very large chunk, kind of at 7 o'clock to 10 o'clock. That's the Highway Fund. And the Highway Fund, as you can see, of all the funds, is the largest expenditure of any one department. And that is $1,369,627. That's 32% of the budget. And that particular department is one that we are looking very closely at for, for developing agreements with the two villages so that we can drive down the costs of everybody's Highway Department, because it is a large chunk of our budget, maybe the largest department, and may offer the largest opportunities for us in terms of reductions next year. And the reason I bring this up is that we have been told, we are not asked, we are told, that next year there will be a freeze on spending. And furthermore, we will be asked to produce a plan for 2016 that shows a reduction of 1% in the following year's budget. Having done that in 2016, we will be expected to reduce yet another 1% or have a plan for 1% reduction, which is reflecting a shared services or consolidation plan. Both of those 1%'s are supposed to be a plan that shows an effort to consolidate. And in, as you all know, in the town of Red Hook, we have two consolidated villages. So, we've been working for the last six months on looking at Highway and DPW expenditures to see if there aren't ways that we can develop shared services between the Village of Tivoli, the Village of Red Hook, and the Town of Red Hook that are new. We already do some shared services together, but this would be an addition, because if we do not come up with that plan that we're talking about, the taxpayers of Red Hook will not receive a reduction or a rebate in their taxes. So it's up to school boards and town boards to meet this directive from the state. That suggests that cuts, even further cuts, are going to have to be considered by our board and every board in the state. The pressure's coming down from the top onto the county and from the county down to the state and small munis, or the village and town, small governments. And of course, with the smallest budgets of all, we're the ones that are going to have the largest struggle. So, I don't know how to say it any other way, but to say that we have worked very hard to meet the cap this year. We understand that with these figures that we're talking to you about, in no way reflect our appreciation of the employees here, of the fire districts, of the police district. It's just the best we felt we could do with all the constraints we have. So, I hope you'll bear with us and I hope you will ask questions, because we would be happy to try to explain how we arrived at what we did. The tiny sliver that appears brown up there is the Consolidated Lighting District. That's $3,000, 1% of the budget. And what that means is those are expenses for all the lighting throughout the town, various street lightings and so forth. And we allocate based on the former year's usage and anticipated increases in electric bills, an amount of money. And that's what that percent is, 1% of the budget. It seems like a lot, doesn't it? But, and it is a lot. The red is the Fire District. That's a special district. It's a special fund. It reflects 10% of the budget and it includes both fired, both fire companies, the Tivoli Fire Company and the Red Hook Fire Company. Tivoli is unique in that that contract is with the Village of Tivoli. The Village of Tivoli is in charge of those expenditures and those allocations. So, our contract is with the village, in the case of the Village of Tivoli. In the case of the Town of Red Hook or Red Hook Village and Town, our contract is with the Red Hook Fire Company, which is an independent company, has its own Board of Directors, has its own budget, has its own process, and we have a contract with them as a separate entity. Those two combined amount to $424,113, or 10% of the overall Red Hook Town budget. So that's appropriations by fund. And before we just move ahead, I think it would be good if there are questions, if there are concerns, if you would like to know more than what we've described in this overview, please feel free to interrupt at any time. Yes, Jim, hi.
Hi, Sue.
Welcome.
So, the Fire, since you just discussed the Fire, I'll introduce myself. I'm Jim Mullaby. I'm with the Rotary Fire Company. I'm on the Board of Directors and I have a few of my cohorts with me here behind me. How much more is the budget in for the Fire this year than it was last, or is it the same?
It's 1.5% this year. It's a two-year contract, as you know. And the additional next year included in this contract will be on that number, an additional 1.5 for the following year.
Wonderful. I want to thank you for that. I know how difficult this has been.
It's, it's --
And I know that Mr. Ross --
Yeah.
And I, Mr. Neil and I have been, and the rest of our board have been discussing this, looking for a little bit extra.
Yeah.
But I did want to take a few minutes and take you through what is happening at the Fire Company.
That would be wonderful. Do you want to take the mic so that we can, can you hear all right?
Can you hear okay?
He can hear okay, okay.
So, there was a discussion at one of your budget meetings here, I don't know when it was, a couple of weeks ago.
Yes.
My wife was reading me the article in the River Chronicle about it.
Yes.
I wanted to just clarify a few things from the Fire Company's perspective. It would have been appreciated if someone from the River Chronicle had spoken to the Fire Company.
It would have been appreciated by this town board, too.
Okay, just to clarify a few things here. So, before I say anything more, I just wanted to indicate that the Fire Company in our town is purely volunteer, okay? Not everybody understands that everyone that's involved in the Fire Company is a volunteer. So, the operation over there is somewhere in the range of 850 to 900 calls a year. Our, our companies around us do a lot of calls as well, but I think we probably do more calls than most. I think Rhinebeck is in the 600 range or so. I don't know Myland's numbers or some of the other numbers, but I know we do somewhere around 850 to 900 a year. We, we have been working with a situation around recruitment. And as I read the article, I noticed that one of the things that was said was, "We're not sure that 20 more money into the Fire Company can solve some of the problems there." And I thought that was right on the money, believe it or not. There are some problems there around recruitment. We are, we are really working through problems with recruitment and trying to get community members to come in and help with the Fire Company. As you can imagine, the restrictions today versus where they were 10 years ago or 20 years ago for a new member coming in are much higher, right? A new member coming in has to go through to be an interior firefighter, something like 100 hours of training that's mandated by the state now. Didn't use to be that way. This is somewhat recent, this number of hours that are required. A new member has to go through OSHA training, has to go through bloodborne pathogen training, has to go through our own drill infrastructure that we have. So, getting members to come in is one thing and sign up, but getting them to stay is something else altogether that we contend with. At the moment, we are sustained by somewhere in the range of 20 to 30 active members in the Fire Company out of a town of about 11,000, right? That is a very low number. We need assistance there. And so, you know, I would, I would ask for your help in any way, any ideas that you have. We've talked to the village about it, for recruiting, ideas around recruiting. We held a recruiting event here about three months ago. We advertised it, we had an open house, we had two people come in. Two people from the town came in to talk to us about recruiting, neither one became members. The members that do come in again, commitments are big. It's not like it used to be 20 years ago, the commitments are very big. So, it's difficult.
Right.
The other aspects we do is community service. We deal with, we just went around and did fire prevention at six preschools. We went to Middle Road School and took all the apparatus there and took the kids through it, took the smokehouse over there, half a day of volunteers' time, the guys behind me essentially, and a few others. So I want the town to understand, you know, we do all we can, right? I drive to Poughkeepsie every day to go to work. The guys behind me have jobs. Mike Lane, the chief right here, will make 300 to 400 calls this year. There are three or four members that will make 300 to 400 calls. You know, if you're gonna, if you're gonna find a Citizen of the Year in the town, it's gotta be some, one of these two guys here. You know, it's really gotta be some of these guys that are stepping up. We need to recognize these guys that are, that are really pulling it together for the Fire Company.
What can we do in terms of that? In terms of the recruitment, can, have you thought of any way other than having us bring one of you in on a regular basis to say where you are and that you're, you'll have events going on?
I think honestly, and we've talked to the village about this, the, you know, we need, we know we can do more things with recruiting. We know we need to do things in the firehouse in terms of upgrades and some repairs around the firehouse. Most of the firehouse inside is as it was in 1987, when it was built. You'll find the paneling, like was in your basement in 1987, pretty much in the firehouse, right? You'll find the original boiler, you'll find the original kitchen and bathrooms there. We have a plan for the next three years to invest in some repairs there to bring it up to date, to do things there that might help to draw younger members in. We need the 20-year-olds to come in and the 30-year-olds to come in and stay. So we may do, we might try to do things that would entice some of the younger folks to stay around once they join, right? To get them to join and then to get them to stay. So we have some ideas in that area, but we also need to be preparing ourselves, I think, for an eventuality several years from now where we might have a partial paid Fire Company in. And if we have a partial paid Fire Company, we're gonna need to be prepared to pay for that.
Understand. Right.
All right, so I, I'm trying to, you know, we as a board are trying to, you know, make sure the town recognizes the situation we're in and, you know, any help that any citizen of the town has suggestions to help would be welcome, right? We continue to make the majority, our calls are 900 calls. We make the vast majority without assistance from mutual aid. That was the other thing that I, that wasn't very clear. We do have mutual aid arrangements, Rhinebeck and Myland and Tivoli, and we help them and they help us, but the fact is we make the vast majority of the calls ourselves.
Okay. Yeah, we are well-acquainted with state mandates and how tough it is to meet some of them. I, I didn't know that, my grandson is a volunteer firefighter, and I didn't know that the requirements are going up and up and, you know, we're kind of caught in the middle. And as, one of our big concerns is the safety of our citizens, not only the roads they drive on, but also, you know, fire protection, police protection. And it's a delicate balance to try to figure out what's enough, what's not enough, what can we do to help, what can we do to, you know, to advertise if that's what it is that's needed, what can we do to encourage younger people? And I don't think that it's only your organization that is falling behind in volunteerism. In fact, I know it's not.
Yeah, well, I know it.
You know, every, every organization I know is, you know, doing the best they can to recruit younger members, and that is the key, isn't it?
That is the key.
That we're all getting a little long in the tooth. And eventually, Rob Frye is not going to be able to do what he does and somebody --
Well, Rob Frye's one of the ones that makes the 200 or 300 calls.
I know he does. I know he does.
There's a few of them that hold it together.
And I was that age at one time, but I know he'll be my age someday and it's gonna be tough to haul that hose at my age. And I do understand how hard it is to build in, you know, a recruitment process that brings in people who are Mike's age and younger and, and have it continuous so that there's new life and new blood over the years and you have a five-year plan of seeing people fade out.
Right, so investment is required.
Yeah.
But money is not gonna solve the problem. You said that in the meeting, and I read in the article, money is not gonna, well, is not gonna solve the problem. We need people to step up and, and help. Or we'll end up spending a lot more money with, you know, five or 10 paid members of the Fire Company.
Right. Is, I have to ask you, is there a mentoring program where high school kids, I guess you can recruit as young as 16, or am I wrong?
I have, I had six boys in my kitchen the other day, two weeks ago. My son just turned 16 and I'm, I'm trying to pull them all in. The problem with that is they're 16, there's limitations on what they can do. When they turn 17, they can do more.
Right.
However, when they turn 18, they go to college.
I understand.
And --
Or the service or whatever.
They go to college. You know, you see them in the summertime and then maybe you won't see them. So the 20-year-olds is really, you know, the set of folks we're trying to get off on.
You know what I would love to do is, is, I mean, it's a lot for you guys to come out for meetings. This is, it's wonderful that you're here. If there were some way we could come to one of your meetings on a Friday night and we could informally, you know, behind the scenes, kick around ideas, things that each of us belongs to some organization, if it's a church or, or, you know, a voluntary organization of some kind. There are strategies that every organization uses to, to try to do exactly what we're talking about and maybe --
We would welcome your help.
Maybe we could come to you next time. We'll set a date.
Okay.
When we can come to you and we can talk around your table.
Yep.
And think about, you know, Jim belongs to some things, I know Bill and Harry do, I do.
Well, I'll give you an example of what we could do, just, and then we can finish the topic, probably, if you want to move on.
Okay.
But the parking lot, I want to clarify that as well.
Okay.
When we spoke to Jim and Bill about the parking lot in our meeting prep for this, we have a parking lot. The Fire Company has a parking lot. It's perfectly, works perfectly well for us. The parking lot that we were referring to is not for the Fire Company. That parking lot that we're talking to the village mayor and the village board about would be on the side of our building. It would be for the Little Lee, the Cub Scouts, the senior citizens, the 4-H Club, the Rotary, the library, all the groups that use the community room, which use it essentially. We don't charge any of those groups to use the community room. We lost access to the parking lot across the street several years ago, you're familiar with that, right?
Yes.
We've been working to get a new parking lot for that purpose, but the cost of doing that out of our own pocket is very high. And so we could, you know, we could work together to figure that one out, I think, right?
Good.
Between the town, the village, and the Fire Company so that the community benefits from a new parking lot to get into the Fire Company. That's one example, and I'm sure there's a lot more we could, we could probably come up with.
You may or may not have been here when I said that there was a recognition last night and --
We were there. We had, we had a meeting there last night.
Yeah.
We saw all the cars there.
You know, every time I go in there, I think of what a, what an all-purpose, as this room is, only it's so much smaller that we can't do here what, you know, a lot of places can do, but all-purpose rooms are wonderful.
Well, it's a big reason because the parks that go on there and the community parks in our part of the lot.
Yeah.
And the library was there for a Christmas party one night and we had some kids running across in front where the trucks pull up. We had to fix that.
Yes, right. I understand.
So it should be a priority for the town.
Okay.
The village and the Fire Company.
Fair enough. Fair enough.
All right, so that's, that's really what I wanted to say.
Okay.
Anything you guys want?
Yes, please.
One thing, I've been there a long time, the firehouse.
Yes, it has.
We're two years, to be exact.
Yes, it has.
Active, all 42. Years ago, at 3:00 in the afternoon, we had 15, 20 guys hanging out after work. Now everybody's working two, sometimes three jobs, or their spouses are working.
Right.
So now we don't have the guys that come over there and their training requirements are, are out of, out of this world, or just, every year, you get tired of it.
Right.
You know, and you just don't have the people that want to join. And then they come in, you tell them what they have to do, they don't get it, and just say, "Yeah, right," and out the door they go. You know, so it's not for everybody.
I understand.
And when you start begging for people to come in, you know what you get.
It's gotta be fun to do. It's gotta be a commitment and it's gotta be, you know, a personal, a personal satisfaction in it, whatever you do as a volunteer, you gotta have some personal satisfaction.
We're not like all the other organizations.
Yeah.
The other organizations have planned events.
Right.
Fire EMS calls, they're not planned events. When they go, pager goes off, you have to go now.
Right.
So, you know, it's not like you're gonna, "Okay, I got a meeting next week." It's not like that. So you just drop everything and you leave your family behind, which a lot of people don't realize either.
Yes, and, and, you know, I have to say that just having witnessed that very tragic accident on my street on, on Sunday last, that the amount of time that is necessary to clarify what happened is an extended period of time. And you guys are there, you know, holding down the fort, making sure traffic is diverted until the, the accident scene can be studied, and sometimes it's four hours in the cold.
Other things, fire, if you can't handle it by the border.
And people don't, you know, people don't, right, and people don't realize that it's not just a call, it's sometimes hours of being on scene. Not always fire, but all kinds of things.
Right.
So I do, I, I really do appreciate your coming and talking on camera to the public because it was a hard, it was a hard article to read, I have to say. While it was, while it was accurate, it was, you know, when you take something out of the -- was, while it was accurate, it was, you know, when you take something out of the tone of the way things are said, it can sound harsh. And this board is 100% supportive of the fire companies, both of them. And I'm, I'm so glad you came and gave us time to talk with each other about it.
My pleasure.
Thank you. So, anything else? I guess we're now at, it, would we like to talk any further about the fire budget? Were you okay with that? Okay. So we're at the top now at 12 o'clock. And you'll see another special district. This is the water district. And the water district serves, Jim, how many? Six, over 600 customer homes, right?
Basically Linden Acres and College Park.
Linden Acres and College Park. But I think there are full, it could serve as many as 800 and it's, it's not that many. But the amount, that too is a volunteer board who oversees the expenditures of that department. And there is one very, very part-time person who serves as water district manager and a part-time clerk in that office. The billings for that are not included in overall taxes, but that's the amount of money it costs to run that water district. And that is billed to those people who are served by the district and only them. So that's the complete pie chart. And, and if, does anyone wanna say anything further about fire companies or?
No, they can pay a lot of money.
Okay. I want to, before we move away from service, recognize Patrick Hildenbrand, who is the sergeant of the Red Hook Police Force. And the Red Hook Police Force is one of the police forces we have a contract with. And Pat, you too are charged with protecting citizens in this town, along with state police and county police. And again, what is in this budget in no way reflects, you know, the esteem we hold for anyone because there isn't enough money to thank the firefighters or the police for what they do for this community. But I appreciate your coming and wondered if you had any questions about safety and, and the police budget in general.
I do. I have, I have a couple. I'd like to speak to this.
Yes, sure.
When we, when I started here at the police department, about eight or nine years ago, our budget was over $90,000 from our town. We had the contract with the town. This year it's $50,000. The biggest thing that we see, obviously, is we're, we're, I'm a volunteer fireman as well, been to it 17 years. So I know the difficulties it is with the training and these guys are, these guys are riling the money. It's a lot. If you don't do it when you're young, you're not, it's difficult for people to get it done. You know, again, you know, like these guys, is, you know, safety for our community is my number one goal. Obviously, doing this job, everybody who does the job is a police officer or a fireman. You, you kind of put yourself out there. You leave your families. You put yourself, our goal, if I put myself in harm's way and got a bit of head to leave my family, that's the job I took. That's what we do. And the biggest thing that I see in the town is that a lot of the times, the majority of the times, we are the first ones there. And the only reason for that is because we are dedicated to Red Hook. It's the only reason for that. But that time, a lot, you know, in most situations, makes a big difference. One of the things that we have to, what we have to start to work towards is, you know, prior to budget, me sitting with somebody, let you know where our calls are this year compared to last year. Calls for service, arrests, what type of arrest, what's actually going on in the town to our residents, what crime, what people, we have as of 2012, was 11,319 people in town of Red Hook as 2012 census. But we're not dealing with the majority of those people. We're dealing with the transplants that come in and the outside people that wander through. And they come here to commit crimes to our residents and either sell drugs, sexual assaults, you name it. Things happen. You know, people migrate out of the bigger cities and they come up, they think it's, you know, it's, it's a neat, it's easy pickings. And what I've noticed is on the $50,000, we get about two to two and a half patrols as I work it out and I randomly put them through the week. Difficulty where it comes is I, I'm in the village, 'cause, 'cause I, and there's the emergency call here in the town call, emergency call in the town. And I'm the closest car. Technically, I can't come. Technically, you know, 'cause we have it, we have these, it's scheduled. What I'd like to start seeing as the time goes by and it's going, I, I control my budget. I watch what, you know, I, I get numbers. I'm good at it. I understand you guys are gonna have so much to work with. And you have restrictions and you have tax caps. And as the years go by, we have to work towards a small increase to go that way so that as the town grows, we grow with it. Town doesn't grow and we stay, and then we stay behind. There is state police, there is sheriff's office, there is the red police. There's also the high park police, the rhyming police. A lot of towns have their own police departments and there's reasons for that. Everybody's good. But when you, when you contract with us, you, you own us. You get us here. We live in this community. Our goal is to protect these residents. And it's difficult sitting in the office when I know there's a town call that I could, I could have been at seven, eight minutes ago, when a call's coming from the four lanes, or it's coming from Pine Plains to a call in the town, when I know it's a mile up the road from me, I can be there in 45 seconds. There's gotta be, there's gotta be some model and some work towards where we're, we can answer more emergency calls in the town on top of our, on top of our patrols. I mean, just a patrol alone, since, since January 1st to date, is over 900 calls for service on, on schedule that way and over 95 arrests. That's, you know, I don't take it as an off now, I can do those numbers. But that's just on those two, on, on those two days. What happens a lot during the day, like today, we had seven walk-ins, 'cause I have this meeting today, so it was a pressure on my mind, from town residents. They walk in, they have a fraud complaint. They have somebody break into their car. We have vehicle warrants and burglaries from large, you know, more garages that are attached to dwellings in someone's house, animal complaints. You name it, they have a complaint on it. Someone stole their car, but it was really taken from a, from, they bought their house and it was repo'd by the bank. A lot of the walk-in complaints. So do I say, hey, I'm sorry, tomorrow at four, I can help you? It's, it's, so we take the complaint, we take them in, 'cause I'm not gonna tell you, and I'm not gonna tell you to drive to Rhinebeck or drive somewhere and sit and wait for a car to come, a shift change. I'm not gonna do that, 'cause I've done that before. And they say, well, you're the red police. I live in Red Hook. Why would you, why can't you help me? And so things like that, there's gotta be a way for us to, 'cause people wanna come down to the PD. They wanna walk in, have a complaint handled, us to give them an, a report, do an investigation form, whatever it might be. We're right here and they want our services to be able to do it. It's just gotta be worked out somehow, worked. It's not gonna go from $50,000 to $250,000. I know that. It's impossible. But as years go by, one and a half percent, two percent, it's gotta be increased because I read that article in, you know, Red Observer, where it said Red Hook is the number one growing town in Dutchess County. I believe it. I mean, I know the traffic and the people we're dealing with. And a lot of the people we deal with are not town residents. They're outside people that come here and it makes it, and, and we, we're busy. You know, for, for small PD, you know, we're small, but I make sure we're extremely effective. You know, volunteer firemen, medics, full paid firemen, you know, guys with all different trainings and backgrounds, military guys with medical, with medic backgrounds. So that when we go to a call and if there is a time delay, with guys getting out, we can still help people regardless of what we do. I just need the ability to work that way. You know, I would ask, you know, $50,000, I appreciate staying at that. You know, I would ask for you to find some type of increase in that for this year's budget so that we can work towards that model down the road. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
One other thing. Look at my notes here, I was looking at them, sorry. You guys bring up a good point is, you know, we are a paid police department. You brought up community relations, which is a huge thing, you know. When, when we interview people, we, we police for the community and not on. And that's, that's the model you have to go. As police, I tell everybody when I'm in the interview, I say, if you have thick skin, they always ask me why. I say, if you want everybody to love you, be a fireman. Don't be a cop, because they'll beat you up, you know. And we hold, you know, we took over the egg hunt, you know, when the village, when the village backed out of it and the village helps us out now 'cause they're doing it by themselves. Egg hunt, Halloween safety, bike rodeos. When you see my guys there in uniform at those, that's free, they're, they're not on the clock doing that. They volunteer their time to the community and to, to the kids here so that we can keep those programs going. So when they, you see them at the bike rodeos and you see them at the Halloween safety days and you see them at the egg, the egg hunt in uniforms, they're not getting paid to be there. You know, I think, if, if, and there's not many people that are gonna come out when they know they can get paid for free, you know. So it makes a big difference. So there is, that's the biggest thing for me is community involvement. We get involved in supporting families for Thanksgiving, Christmases, donations for any kind of, any runs that are in town, guys digging their own pockets to take out their money to support residents here, you know. And we do have a lot of residents that are not well off, you know. And we, Father Pat the Church has a great thing in Christmas time. We donate, you know, enough money to provide six families with presents for their kids, you know, for their families. I mean, guys are digging their own pockets. So that's a lot people don't see, which I think is huge. Thanksgiving's coming up. We make sure you have a full spread meal for at least five or six families, you know. That's important. Those are the things that you have to kind of give back. It's not just, you know, we're a police department, but they also care about the people that are here. So, and these guys do that as well, you know. We do that in Pibbly. So it's kind of who we are. But again, going back to that, these are all things that we, we look to move forward with. So, that was that. Thank you.
And one of the things that is somewhat complicating, just to clarify for, for the press and for the public, is that while you report as a village police entity, the village calendar is on a different cycle from the town calendar, which complicates some of the things you just said even further, where you're, you will begin a budget process there based on income from us that'll conclude in the next month. You'll begin looking at it in March and trying to figure out what are you gonna do for your year ahead. So it's off-cycle and that complicates it a little bit. A lot, actually. So we'll, we'll-
Yeah, we do, like, you know, on, you know, we take the town residents, just the town residents that we have here on $50,000. You know, it's costing each resident $4.42 a year, $4 a year. Basically, a recyclable fact that there, you know, is what it costs for those police protection for us. And a hundred grand, obviously double it, $8 a change. So when you break it down is, you don't think about it until you need it. And when you need it, you say, money well spent. And that time makes a big difference, you know. And I personally have been involved in many, many cases where getting there quick makes a huge difference. And just down the road, years to come, work towards, you know, what they're gonna be doing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions of these gentlemen while they're here, from any of us? Harry? Harry?
No.
Okay, I wish that we could do more, but I think always talking in open conversation and sometimes honestly around a table and maybe a cup of coffee might be a good way to start. And we haven't done that. And I would welcome that in, in the case of both, both entities. So let's work toward that in the months ahead. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Yes, of course.
Any plans to meet with the village police department as far as doing calls in the town when they're fully assigned?
There isn't until tomorrow.
Because I, I work at 911. I don't know if you know that or not.
I do know that very well. As you know, I know that.
And there are times where we pull for a car and we know this guy's sitting in the village.
Yes.
And we got cars coming from Pine Plains or further. So, I mean, it's really something that should be looked at. I totally agree with Patrick on that.
Yeah. We are aware of that. I, I mean, it's, it's hard to know how to answer that question because I can assure you, we cannot afford a full-time police department around the clock, seven days a week. And I don't know when that call is gonna come-
And that's a lot of time.
-and how to plan for it. Do you know? See, that's, that's the dilemma, is, is how, how, how to have without a full-time police department at our disposal around the clock. How do you plan for those kinds of emergencies? And sometimes mutual aid is the only way to do it, I guess. I, I, I have to tell you, it's confounded me more than once. I've met with Patrick. I've met with the mayor on more than one occasion. We've wrestled with this many, many times. Would one more man do it? You know, would one more four-hour shift do it? Okay, so that's fine. And so we'll put on, let's say we put on another four-hour shift, another man for a four-hour shift. But that still leaves many, many hours of the week uncovered. Do you know what I mean? It's, it's-
Like, four hours is, and that's the thing, is you may bring up a good point. You don't know when-
You don't know when it's coming.
So when your, when your dad's gonna have a heart attack, but it's, you know, we do that. I've been, before I was a cop, volunteer fireman. These guys, we, we volunteer to go in houses for free that are burning. I mean, like, it takes a certain person. So you, you bring up a good point, but it is, you know, you, you said yourself, it's about saving our community. So you, you never know when it's gonna happen. But I can assure you, I can, the parent on top of the hill, the kid was choking, they were blue and they had, they didn't know CPR. That kid was dying. We were there in less than a minute and saved that kid. I guarantee you, they'll pay $50,000 out of the pocket. So you don't, you never know when it is.
I do know.
But it's, it's money well spent because there are community members that we all know and time matters, you know. That's the biggest thing. You don't know. You can put on 100, you can put on three, and though you have on those three, you don't know.
Right. Well, I thank you all. Thank you all for your service. Let's, let's move to the next slide and maybe we can, is that it? That's it. This shows revenues other than taxes by fund. And again, the General A Fund is the fund that is, that includes services. Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen. Shall I call you, Jim?
Yes.
I'll call you about the date.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So the General A Fund shows that 34% of our revenues go to the General A Fund, other than taxes. Going down from that, the Consolidated Lighting District is a very small sliver. The General B Fund, which is the town outside the villages, they have a large infusion of funds other than taxes because of sales tax revenue. And that's 40% of those revenues. The Highway DB, there is $271,159 in this budget, or 19%. That is, I imagine, Chip's money and others' revenues, right, Teresa? Okay. Fire District, there are 0% revenues other than taxes there. And the Water District, again, you'll see the revenues raised are 7% of the budget in the Water District. Now, the next slide talks about taxes to be collected. And this is how the taxes slice up. In the upper right-hand fund, you'll see, starting at 12 o'clock and going to maybe 4 o'clock, it's 30% of the budget, 36% of the budget is collected for highway expenses, much of it for materials and salaries and equipment to keep the roads open and safe for emergency vehicles and for, for all of us who travel them regularly. The General A Fund is from, say, 5 o'clock to 10 o'clock. And the General A Fund is $1,286,252. That is collected in taxes from all residents of Red Hook. Both the villages and the town outside the villages contribute to that General A Fund. The infrastructure is included in that. The people who work- The infrastructure is included in that, the people who work in this building is included in that. That's those things that benefit all people in the entire town. Consolidated Lighting, again, is a special district, and we collect taxes in the amount of $30,000 there. The Fire District, again, is seen in the upper, 10 o'clock to 12 o'clock, and we collect taxes in the amount of $424,013 in this budget. So, does anyone on the board or anyone here have any questions about the taxes to be Okay, the next amount to be raised by taxes and the tax rate per thousand is shown here. You'll see in the A Fund, there's a 7.8% increase town-wide. In the B Fund, there is zero. And in the DB Fund, we see an increase of three, less than 3.8%, which gives us a town-wide increase of 1.1% over last year. Next slide, this is going to be hard to see. This is, the special districts broken down, and this is for your reference only. It's not included, nothing on this page is included in the tax cap. Isn't that correct, Debbie? All of the special districts are excluded. Final page.
That's not correct. This is your tax, your rate per thousand.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, of course.
That's different from your tax cap.
Of course, that's right.
Which is based on total, which includes those.
Right. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, the tentative, this next slide is one that... That's not what I'm showing, page 22. Yes, it is. You probably can't read that at home.
It should be 245.9. Right? Is that what that's on here?
245.9.
245.9.
Right. So on homes that are assessed, an average home in the town of Red Hook, which we've established by way of the real estate, tell me again what the source of the 245,900...
It's the median selling price of a home for the town of Red Hook, for our area, and it used to be 300,000, we used that...
Yeah, what is the source? The Duchess County Realtors?
If you Google it, it comes up, I know, it's the county has it, Realtors.
Okay. So I thought it came from...
The median selling.
Okay, it's based on, it's based on real estate sales. Is this countywide, this number, or is it particularly to Red Hook?
It's countywide.
Because the recent CPF accounting did not show that. The recent CPF accounting showed a different number, slightly higher than this. So they may not just be up to this number. We'll look into that.
We pulled this up on... And...
Yeah, it may be, it may have changed in the last two months, right. Okay, so, townwide village, the annual increase to the taxpayers, and this is what everyone is interested in knowing about their own properties, the average increase in taxes for the average taxpayer per thousand is $3.02 annually. And the projection for...
That's not per thousand.
It's for the whole year.
That's for the year. For that...
The increase of the year, but the 2014, they paid 274,000. This year, they pay $3.02 more.
For the year, right.
For the year, right. Town outside, there's a slight decrease in the town taxes from 322 in 2014 to 293 in 2015, or 3 cents a thousand. So there's no increase in the townwide per thousand that's discernible, and outside, it's only 3 cents per thousand. So the next slide will show you the total combined appropriations by departments. The transportation is 1,162,668, or 27% of the budget. That's largely highway support. The general government support is 797,156,000, or 18%. Employee benefits is a large chunk in the amount of 612,338, or 14% of budget. Culture and Recreation, you can see, is 3% of the budget at 140,456. The debt service is 421,000, or 10% of the budget this year. And Public Safety, which includes those items we were talking about earlier, which is fire and police protection, totals 670,430. And finally, Home and Community is 351,751. So, tax rate schedule, you will see on page 19, the amount to be raised by taxes total will be $2,767,592. That percent of change is 2.109%, or only, in this amount of budget, only $57,170 total in all funds increase. Okay, this final, or next to last, is the five-year comparison of unreserved fund balance. And you'll see 2009, 10, 11, 12, and 13. You'll see in 2011, in the General A Fund, we dipped into the fund balance in order to bring the budget into alignment that year, and since then, we have been steadily increasing that fund balance as we have promised that we would do, so that it now in the A Fund is up to 331,000. In the B Fund, it's even a larger percent of the budget, it's 486,664. In the DB Fund, you'll see we have 492,266. We have 86,414 in the Water District. We have 1,124 in the lighting SNL, and in the Fire District, 88,467 in the unreserved fund balance. Okay, on the very last slide, this shows the dark slide, the dark slide in each general, in each fund represents the fund balance and shows it as it relates to the total budget of that fund. And I think what's important to recognize here is that we have steadily protected that fund balance in every case, and from a fiscal point of view, we used to call this, Jim, a rainy day fund, didn't we? The unreserved fund balance. It was set aside and protected by boards so that in the event of an emergency or unexpected events or unexpected expenditures, there was money on hand to count on. And we're slowly climbing back to where we were in the years before the 2008 crisis. So I think this shows good fiscal responsibility on the part of this board, and I think the public will understand what a difficult budget this has been to wrestle with, given all the directives we have had and constraints we have had on the process. I want to recognize Debbie Marks Coons, who has officially retired but is back as a part-time person helping get us through the transition with a new office manager, and you've been wonderful help yet again this year, and has been wonderful too. And Conway has taken over and been faced with not only budget preparation, but also a change in our banking systems, and that has been a big deal, a big... It has been a big deal. And lastly, Rose Meyer, and really, we owe you three a lot. Thank you.
And Rose.
And Rose meets with department heads and listens to them and passes our message to them to help us try to save money, to, she delivers hard messages that we have to cut their budgets, and it's, her job is the least desirable probably of the three, and she does it with grace, and we thank you, Rose.
The least desirable.
So, there we have, in a nutshell, and actually, more than that, in front of you. Is there any comment that any of the board wishes to make in regard to the budget? Start with Jim.
No, it looks good to what we're faced with. I think this is a very decent budget.
Harry?
And I have nothing but support for it. Of course, I'm bragging about it myself, I guess, to some degree, but with your leadership, I think we've done a great job with these resources.
Thank you. Bill?
Well, yeah, I don't think they call you supervisor for nothing, so. All of these ladies who have done such a great job, but they are supervised by you-know-who. So we owe you a great debt also.
Well, we're all in this together, I've said it many times, and I say this not just to those of us who work here, but to everybody in the town and everybody beyond the town. These are not easy times, and you know, when you pick up the paper and you see a billion dollars a day sent, for whatever reason, tax-free zones being established, which means if there aren't taxes being raised there, they're coming from somebody, guess who? So it's very frustrating, and I think the public is not quite sure how to react to those of us who have to levy taxes, and actually, the town taxes are the least per capita of all the taxes that the local public receives. The school taxes being the highest certainly in most towns. And we all have respect for each other, knowing that we wish we had more money to spread around. At the same time, we recognize that sometimes more money isn't the answer, that being creative, being cooperative, working with other people, working with other organizations and towns may force us to come up with change that we wouldn't have otherwise made, but it may be creative and constructive change. So the county is asking us to continue to think about shared services among our departments, between us and other towns, come up with ideas. And I guess I'm saying this now to say to the public that we aren't the ones, only ones that have ideas, that ideas can come from anyone in the public about what they think we could be doing to save money, and we're open to hearing those things as we plan the year ahead, and would love to have fresh ideas. So feel free to contact any one of us and talk with us about it. This is, this is an art, not a science, and it is ever-changing. So we've done the best we can. I know you all do the best you can. We have come to the point now, I think, where the board feels okay. Do you think we should leave the public hearing open in case there is any reason to make any changes? Or are you happy with where we are, that we can close the public hearing on this budget?
I don't think it would cost us anything to leave it open, and we have, we've gotten this done early, so that, I think the time would be well-used to leave it open, not slam the door shut now.
Okay. I'm happy to leave it open too. Is that all right with you, Bill and Jim?
When would you propose to close it and then finalize the budget on that? I think we should have that planned in mind.
Yeah, we could, we could leave it open to the meeting on November 10th, which is a Monday, knowing that we cannot make changes in elected official salaries past Election Day.
We can't make changes after the public hearing, can we? In elected official salaries?
No, we cannot make changes, we cannot make changes in elected officials' salaries before the election. Whatever is before the election is set. After the election, we can make changes. So on November 10th, we could meet and say, the public hearing is still open, the town board has reviewed something, some line item, and we've decided to make a minor adjustment. And we can do that after the election. We cannot change elected officials' salaries. That's the only change we cannot make. The final budget must be filed by, I believe it's November 14th this year, it's a Friday. Got the calendar?
14th is a Friday.
Well, that would work then.
So I think it would work, and it'll also give us a chance to run these numbers with the State Comptroller's Office, to make absolutely certain that with these numbers, we are under the tax cap, because we must do that this year. So...
Our tax cap figures are our own at this point, they have not, is that correct?
That we, from, as everything we can tell, having contacted the State Comptroller's Office, we are under the cap at this, on this budget, with this budget. But it will give us one more, one more glance at it before we file it finally. And that can be filed right after we have that, right after we close the public hearing, we can file it. Isn't that the way we usually do it, Debbie?
Just before you adopt it.
Before we adopt it. So, so on the 10th, we would close the public hearing, and would go in, file it with the State Comptroller's Office, and come back out, and we would then vote to adopt it.
Right. After we close the public hearing, we can make any changes we want, except elected official salaries, then we adopt it. Yeah, that's how that works.
No, no. Oh, say that again.
After we close the public hearing, we can make any changes we want, except elected official salaries. You know, they, if we were to change them, we'd have to change it before the public hearing is closed.
Right.
That doesn't have anything to do with Election Day, it has to do with the public hearing. But after the public hearing, we could hear the public...
No, it has everything to do with the election.
No.
Yes, it does.
We could, we could hear the public.
No, Jim, the election can be, if we were allowed to change our salaries, our elected official salaries, after the election, that could open up the door to all kinds of difficulties.
Yes, it could, but the way the law says is that you cannot change them after you close the public hearing.
Let's look at the, let's look at the data.
Is that, is that going to...
It's irrelevant, but after the public hearing, we can change other things. People brought us an idea up, we said, oh, that's a good idea, maybe we should, maybe we shouldn't. But once we close the public hearing, then we can't change...
What is that language on the election, though? That's, but I don't, I don't know if I have that anymore.
But is that, is that going to, are we concerned about that?
No, I'm not concerned about that at all.
So let's move.
Number seven.
Number seven.
On the Thursday immediately following the General A Fund...
On the Thursday immediately following the general election, the hearing may be adjourned from day to day, but not beyond November 15th.
Right. You had to start your public hearing, I believe.
Five days.
By Thursday after the election.
At least five days prior.
We started the public hearing much earlier.
Right.
Correct. But in fact, I need to read the public hearing notice.
Sue, I think that what you're thinking about is you can't increase your salaries above what you published for your public hearing notice. You can't increase them. I think what you're thinking about is there's also an issue with decreasing after the election those salaries because of the potential impact. Maybe that's what you're thinking about, perhaps? Two different things that you have to both take into account.
Probably.
Okay.
But nonetheless, it is not really an issue to where we stand.
Doing the PowerPoint. That's why I didn't read it.
Sorry, you too.
I will read it now.
That's a good idea.
Notice of public hearing, Town of Redhook. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the town board of the Town of Redhook on October 22nd, 2014, at 7:45 PM local time at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Redhook, New York, 12571, to hear all interested persons on a preliminary budget for the 2015 calendar year for the Town of Redhook. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments and writing to the Town Board, 7340 South Broadway, Redhook, New York. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the town clerk in advance at the above address or by phone, 845-758-4606, so that arrangements can be made. Please take further notice that copies of said preliminary budget are available for inspection by any interested party during the clerk's office hours, Monday through Friday, 9 to 4, at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Redhook. The compensation to be paid to the following officers is as follows. Supervisor, $28,083. Each town board member will receive $7,885. Town clerk, $50,690. Town justices each, there's two justices, $16,213. Highway superintendent, $59,533. And this is by order of the town board, and it was dated October 14th.
Thank you.
I couldn't read it until 7:45. That was the deal. You guys started early.
I see. So we're an entire 8:45 hour late on reading.
But it was written to the minute, so that's correct.
Thank you. Okay. So I guess I would like to make a motion that we leave the public hearing open until November 10th, when we will open the meeting with this discussion. Again, if there is any modification to bring it up then.
And if I could just suggest a time certain for that. Is that December 30?
Yes. I would say 7:40. We'll have a supervisor's report at that meeting. So I would say it would open the public hearing at 7:40. Should be plenty of time to do that. Thank you. Okay.
Now, should I notice that there's a continuation? Or that does not...
Is it necessary? I don't know. I didn't think, I think as long as the public hearing is just adjourned and not closed, it's not necessary, I don't think.
I would put it on your website?
Yes.
You made a motion, right?
Yes, I did.
Second.
Thank you. Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Again, board, thank you for the work you did in this, and thank the public for their support. We will have the monthly statement of the supervisor on November 10th. And this is just a reminder that November 10th is an off day of the week for this meeting in November. But it's because that is an election day, the 11th, the second Tuesday is an election day. So we moved, I'm sorry, Veterans Day. The election is the 4th, and I should have reminded everybody before about that. Veterans Day is the 11th, and there is a service in the Redhook Public Park, Memorial Park on North Broadway in Redhook. And we hope everybody will attend. I believe it's at 6:30, sponsored by the Redhook BFW. Okay. So now I think we can launch into the -- I should ask for public comment. Is there any further public comment? Hearing none. We'll move into the topics for discussion. The public hearings for -- well, the first item on the agenda, I guess, is the letter of agreement. We, this is, Harry, you brought this forward, and you want to just reiterate, this is a...
I don't have a copy of it.
Okay. This is a, just to get this off our plate, this is a letter of agreement to Tangent Theater. We talked about it last time. And we've established this. And I guess we wanted to see the letter and then vote to approve. So this is a letter of agreement between Tangent Theater Company and the Town of Redhook, entered into for the purpose of setting forth the terms of a relationship in connection with the Artsmith Hudson 2015 project grant. And essentially, what it does is affirm that we are acting as the conduit for that theater company for an application for funding. Yes?
Then...
So move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And if you get that signed by them, it'll come back to me, and I'll sign.
Okay.
All right.
I'll take an extra copy.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay. So, setting public hearings for the two fire company agreements. You'll see in your packet, there is a resolution establishing a date for a public hearing regarding the approval of the town board of the Town of Redhook Fire Protection District's Fire Service Agreement between the Town of Redhook and the Village of Redhook and the Redhook Fire Company, and a Fire Protection District Service Agreement between the Town of Redhook and the Village of Tivoli. And these fire contracts are for the years 2015 and 2016. Whereas proposed terms of the agreement entitled Fire Protection District Fire Service Agreement between Town of Redhook and Village of Redhook and the Redhook Fire Company for 2015 and 16 have been submitted to the town board, and there's a copy in your folder. And whereas proposed terms of the agreement entitled Fire Protection District Fire Agreement between the Town of Redhook and the Village of Tivoli have been submitted. Now, therefore be it resolved that we have concurrent public hearings on November 10th, 2014, at Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway. And I think because we talked about budget being at 7:40, this hearing for these items should be probably maybe 8:15. Could we say 8:15 for these? To hear all interested parties on said proposed agreement between the Town of Redhook and the Village of Redhook and the Redhook Fire Company, and the said agreement with the Town of Redhook and the Village of Tivoli. And the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to publish said notice in the Poughkeepsie Journal and the Kingston Freeman. And I so move.
Second.
Thank you.
For discussion, Sue, one, the copy I have with the Redhook one, it says Town of Redhook Fire Protection District Fire Service Agreement, Village of Redhook.
Yes, that's new. And I'm not sure why. That was an attorney addition, I believe.
Well, remember that the Redhook Fire Company is supervised by, from a legal perspective, the Village of Redhook. I know that people think of them as independent, but they really are not. They are a fire company, just like any other fire company, that is subject to the jurisdiction of the village. And we did that research back when we established the LoSa program. We had a lot of conversations about that. So they are really a required party to this agreement. You know, the difference, I think, the primary difference is that the fire company is one of those fire companies that owns its own equipment, whereas in Tivoli, Tivoli owns the equipment and the firehouse.
Right.
But that's the primary distinction. But they still need to be a party to the agreement. You know, for example, they carry the workers' comp policy for the fire company.
Right. That's what I thought. It's kind of like a multi-faceted agreement with them, because it's with the Redhook Fire Company and the Village of Redhook, where Tivoli is just a village of Tivoli.
Right. Because the fire company has the firehouse and the trucks, so they have a little bit of a different relationship. They fund their own equipment. So the money goes in a little bit of a different way than it does in Tivoli. In Tivoli, it all goes to the village. They own all the equipment. But they still have a fire company that responds to the calls.
As long as it's legal, having it that way, that's fine.
Yeah, that part is correct.
But it is a change from the contract last year, in terms of the language, adding the Town of Redhook and the Village of Redhook.
No, I don't think last year, maybe from years and years ago. But since we did the LoSa, it's been like that.
Okay.
Yep.
So there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in paper?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And we set that time at 8:15, is that what it was? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Amending Chapter 131 of the Code of the Town of Redhook entitled Vehicles and Traffic, adding stop intersections, including new stops, on Williams Road and Starbarrick Road.
We've got stop signs here, if I can...
Yeah.
Teresa actually had conversations with the DOT county as to particularly which stops are the town's responsibility and which stops are the county's, right? And so this reflects an updated inventory that she's done on what are ours. So this then adds, substantively, it adds the Williams-Starbarrick Road stop sign, which Teresa is recommending, and she can speak to that. But the adoption by local law is, we had conversations with the Association of Towns. Not all towns do it that way, but that is what they recommend when we looked at this request. So that's the way it's being presented, as an amendment to your local law, to your code with the local law. So we just need to do a public hearing in order to...
The only change there is Williams and Starbarrick plus ones that we clarified with the county.
And the list, Teresa, the list that you have provided me with stop signs throughout the Town of Redhook is stop signs that have been identified and listed to date.
That's a consistent list of the towns, right?
Okay.
Stops are...
Okay. And then these will be added to it.
Including the two new ones. At Williams Road and Starbarrick is a Y intersection, so there'll be two actual signs there, one in one direction, one in the other direction.
Okay.
Adding those to all of our existing and clarifying the ones that are not on the list, and maybe intersecting roads that the county or the state are not owned by the Town of Redhook.
Okay. Jim, do you want to read that resolution?
You want the local law, which is just like the...
Establishing the date for the public hearing.
Establish your date for a public hearing regarding the adoption of the town board of the Town of Redhook of the local law A proposed of 2014 regarding stop signs. I'll read it. The whole thing is fairly short. Whereas a proposed form of local law entitled Proposed Local Law A of 2014, a local law amending Chapter 131 of the Code of the Town of Redhook entitled Vehicles and Traffic, adding stop intersections, including new stop signs at Williams and Starbarrick Road, the proposed local law, has been submitted to the town board of the Town of Redhook. Whereas, Proposed Local Law, modify, or modify, rather, certain provisions of the code to designate stop intersections throughout the town and to add a new stop at Williams and Starbarrick Road, as recommended by the Town Highway Superintendent. And whereas pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SIKR, the town board has determined that the proposed local law is best described as a local legislative decision concerning routine administration and management under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, and that adaptation of this local law constitutes a type-two action which will not have a significant effect on the environment. Now therefore be it resolved by the town board of the Town of Redhook by the favorable vote of not less than a majority of all the members of the board as follows. The town board of the Town of Redhook shall hold a public hearing on November 10th, 2014, at what time?
We're talking now about 8:30, I would think, would be safe.
Yeah, probably very safe.
You want to move it up?
Well, we could always have it later, but you can't have it sooner, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So what do we have? We have 7:40, and then I suspect the fire contracts aren't going to take very long, either.
That's 8:15.
8:15.
That's, okay, then...
Eight o'clock.
We could do it at eight. We'll try this at eight.
Okay.
If you like.
Find me so. The town board of the Town of Redhook shall hold a public hearing on November 10th, 2014, at 8:00 PM at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Redhook, New York, to hear all interested parties on said proposed local law. And the town clerk is hereby authorized and directed to publish notice of said public hearing in the Poughkeepsie Journal and the Kingston Freeman, the official newspapers of said town, on and before October 31st, 2014, which is not less than 10 calendar days prior to the date of said public hearing.
Thank you, Jim. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The second resolution we're considering tonight is approving the execution of a waiver of right of first refusal. Bill O'Neill, do you have that in your packet?
Yeah.
And could you read that for us, please?
Whereas Sienic Hudson Land Trust, the grantee, is the grantee of a conservation easement made by John Feller with respect to certain real property located at 101 Feller Newmark Road, described therein as the property, which easement is dated the 15th day of April 2005 and filed in the office of the Dutchess County Clerk on the 19th day of April 2005. Whereas the Town of Redhook is the holder of a third-party enforcement right under that easement pursuant to which the grantee and the town may exercise a right of first refusal upon sale of the property under certain circumstances. And whereas the current owner of a portion of the property has advised the grantor and the town of their intent to sell such portion of the property pursuant to a contract of sale unfiled with the town clerk, subject to the terms of the easement, and the grantee has indicated its intent to execute a limited waiver of right of first refusal with respect to such transaction, now therefore be it resolved by the town board of the Town of Redhook that the town board of the Town of Redhook hereby consents to the execution by the supervisor of a limited waiver of right of first refusal with respect to the foregoing transaction in the form approved by the grantee and the attorney for the town.
Thank you, Bill.
And I so move.
Second.
And for purposes of discussion, I refer you to a letter received. It was sent from Sienic Hudson on October 20th to us regarding this transaction, regarding the estate of John Feller to Robert and Elizabeth McKeon, limited waiver of right of first refusal. Dear Supervisor Crane, Sienic Hudson has received a contract for the sale of 128 acres of property owned by the estate of John Feller. To Robert P. and Elizabeth W. McKeon, as you are aware, a conservation easement encumbers the property, and the easement includes a provision which gives Sienic Hudson and the Town of Redhook a right of first refusal to purchase the property or portion of the property in an event an offer is made. Town Attorney Christine Shaw, who has also received a copy of the contract of sale, has requested that Sienic Hudson... has requested that scenic Hudson provide a letter indicating whether any action is required by the town. It is our understanding that Mr. and Mrs. McKeon will utilize the property for hay production and grazing livestock and will incorporate this property into their existing active agricultural operation on adjoining lands. Given their, Mr. and Mrs. McKeon's agricultural utilization of other properties encumbered by conservation easements held by scenic Hudson, it is our assessment that the McKeons are demonstrating by their actions intent to conduct farming on the property. Seenic Hudson therefore believes it would be appropriate to issue a limited waiver of right of first refusal for this particular transaction, and is signed Michael Nutson from, as the conservation easement manager for scenic Hudson. So there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Now, does anyone have anything else that needs to be brought forward before we do board and committee reports? There's a zoning report, Board of Appeals Monthly Report. Jim, do you have the copy of that in your folder?
There are two, the Bureau of Appeals, this is the meeting as of October 8, Wednesday. Interpretation to the Building Inspector and Building Department on one and interpretation of throwing up the other. And the next meeting will be held Wednesday, November 12, as importantly, which will be the public hearings for these two appeals.
Okay, thank you. Is there a report from the planning board? No? I don't have one, I don't think, unless it's. I know they met very recently.
It was, you know, two nights ago.
Yes.
I don't have any.
Did anyone attend that meeting?
I was not able to attend, so.
Okay.
But they had a public hearing. Did you wonder what the business was? They had the old Rand McGarrett Roman amended site plan on the agenda. They had accessory apartment, a public hearing on that, on Haven Hill Road, and there was a discussion on the Hoffman residential development, you know, on Old Farm Road, the major subdivision, ordinary plat and site plan. There was still old business area reviewing, as well as the Preservate Lake Kill was on the agenda, and new business where the Williams and R.R. Development for Lot Line Alteration on Metzger Road, Beauty Depot at 17 Glen Pond Drive Site Plan.
Okay, thank you. And there is no report from the Ethics Board. In terms of departments, we have a Building Department report. Jim, you have that one as well? If not, I have it here.
Yes, you did. Let's see, they were total of 36 permits. I'll give you all the totals, I don't really care. There was 53 inspections. Certificates, there were 34, which was 18 CCs and 16 COs. There were nine searches. You know, and there's so much for search, so their revenue for their permits and the searches comes to $4,335. It was $3,435, then $900 for the nine searches, because a search and a store search, it'd be charged $100 apiece. And then they were, they followed up on three complaints as well. One was a property maintenance complaint, and there were two zoning complaints.
Any questions on that one? Thank you, Jim. Harry, do you have the purchasing agents report?
I do. There's been fairly active during this past month. There were purchases in the amount of $57,000, largest being $14,000, slightly more than that for blacktop for the highway department. The caulking project on, for the floor in the garage was completed at a cost of just over $2,900. The saga of the insulation for this room goes on, and Ted has been researching some additional approaches that might be less costly than some of the ones which were considered in the past. And a purchase order has been issued to replace the chairs in the conference room, and I understand they'll be probably delivered next week.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, Harry. So Water Department report?
Yes. Normal was 77,000 gallons per day, and in September, we pumped 88,000 gallons per day. The wells, the feet above water, well one is 38 resting, and well two is 26 feet while a pump was running. Tubidity's fine, for in residual is fine, the microm filters are operating satisfactorily, so the hyperchloride supply is fine. They have some projects planned for 2015, which includes some valves and connections. You know, Hank is always upgrading different portions of the water district, and they hope to upgrade some of the piping around the pump house, which they did an exploratory on this past year. They've got a few outstanding work orders for some primarily stuck meters, and that's about it, with the exception that, I also have a letter here from Hank that he had sent to Ann, it was to transfer some more money. In fact, I can read his memo. It's referenced to concerning the September 2nd thing, which is a copy of, that's when they had to replace the pump. Would it boil down to the pump cost a lot more than Hank had anticipated? These pumps, they get expensive, so they need to transfer some more money from one of their fund balances, which they have healthy balances just for these purposes. And that was, you know, Hank had asked for that on October 16, and that was also included with the report.
Is that an amount that needs just a budget adjustment?
You know, it doesn't say that here, but we could certainly approve the budget adjustment if you'd like to do that now. Let me read Hank's letter.
Fine.
My estimate of pump replacement cost in the previous memo was awfully low. We had to replace the first pump with a smaller one. Our total pump replacement costs are about $21,500. My previous memo that you referenced, we transferred $5,000 from the unreserved balance for pump replacement, and they need to transfer an additional $16,500 from either the fund balance unreserved to general maintenance source of supply. It's not available from that, but I know we have the funding, so this would, I don't see why we can't authorize that transfer now. So I'll move that we authorize that transfer.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so we're on to committee reports. Bill, have you got the working group report?
Yeah. Yes, well, in the October meetings, the intermunicipal task force met with various residents of the town of Red Hook regarding different issues with respect to zoning, one in the water conservation district adjacent to Tivoli, one about the traditional neighborhood district, the commercial center along Route 9 south of the village of Red Hook, and also one with respect to permitted uses available within the agricultural business district, limits on agricultural noise in the RD 1.5 zoning district, and sources of water for the proposed TNDs adjacent to the villages. So that's what was going on in October.
And Harry, the rec commission?
Yeah, it's now fall, the rec commission is wrapping things up. The wetland mitigation in the new park, we have a deadline to complete it this fall, and that is moving along with the expectation we'll have it done in the next two months. The summer rec program has been completed. He's receiving reports from the people who oversaw the various aspects of it. We received a grant from the Dutchess County Department of Community and Family Service Grant of $5,000, which is an increase of $3,500 over last year. They came and looked at our programs and decided that that was appropriate. The county has done an inspection of the summer program, and their report is yet to come. The Fall Baseball League has, is wrapping up the last game, is November 19, if it doesn't snow. That's my addition to that comment. Otherwise, everything else is being done, is prep work for next year's activities.
Thank you, Harry. It's been a very, very busy and successful season. Brenda is not here, but there is a Senior Services Committee report. They're exploring the possibility of sponsoring a local senior expo during the fall of 2015. Among other items, the expo would have a spectrum of vendors, guest speakers, and breakout sessions regarding topics pertinent to senior citizens in our community. Any vendor, speaker, or individual who would like to be present or assist with the senior expo should email Andrew Keear, who is the Chair of the Senior Services Committee, at More information regarding the definite plans for this expo will follow in future communications with the town board and in other venues. And that's from Andrew Keear, this chair. Bill, there's a ZRC.
Yes. Previously, the town board had referred to the ZRC, a question of agricultural fences in the town of Red Hook. At the October 9 meeting, which really was a joint meeting with the Ag and Open Space Committee, the ZRC made the following referral back to the town board on its recommendations as follows. One, to add to Section 143-4 of our zoning law, the definition of agricultural fences, fences constructed on parcels that are within a New York State certified agricultural district and constituting a farming operation as defined by the State Ag and Markets Law, for purposes of containing or protecting farm animals and crops from wild animals or trespassers, or buffering agricultural areas from residential and commercial uses. So the ZRC recommends that definition of an agricultural fence to be added to our zoning. And secondly, they asked the board to modify Section 143-28A of our zoning law as follows, to delete a sentence that begins and refers to fencing for agricultural purposes, take that sentence out entirely, and add the following sentence, quote, "Agricultural fences shall be exempt from building permits and height restrictions in all zones." So those were the two prongs of the recommended change in our zoning according to the ZRC. Procedurally, they asked that I make this referral back to the town board and ask the town board to ask the attorney for the town to prepare a law, a resolution amending that zoning. And the ZRC, at the same time, understanding the concern of the town board about allowing an unrestricted, you know, exemption of agricultural fences from our zoning, that there should be some language in the zoning statute that refers to what we commonly call spite fences, and that this should be addressed at the same time that the agricultural fences are asked to be made exempt under this language that they have recommended. So the subject of spite fencing is on now for their agenda in October, and it's already been circulated, the definitions, I think the attorney for the town has weighed in on that subject. So the ZRC wants to propose also some change in zoning with respect to spite fencing, but they wanted the town board to go ahead, if possible, on this proposed zoning change on agricultural fencing. Procedurally, I guess it would be if the attorney for the town does the resolution, presents it to the town board, perhaps at our next business meeting, then we would set a public hearing on the subject, and then we'd take it on then into December, probably.
Makes sense, but the only question is that, shouldn't we do it at the same time as the spite fencing? Because where this whole problem came about was actually a farm spite fence, wasn't it?
Right, I know, I know. I'm just telling you what they said.
Yeah, I know, that's what I wondered.
They didn't want to, well, I mean, as we all know, this has been taking a while.
Yeah.
So I think the ZRC felt that they should finish what they had determined that they could deal with, this definition and the exemption of agricultural fencing, and then they would get to the spite fencing. But if the town board wants to do that at the same time, why, that's, you know, that would just be, that would be our discretion.
I think it's great that we're done on that. My take would be let's have the recommendation on a spite fence and then have our attorney review both at the same time.
I would agree that we do it all at once, you know.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know what everybody else thinks, but it makes sense.
Yeah, if we could, if we could, I think so, too. If we could ask the attorney, once a definition is presented for spite fences, to move forward with this public hearing, possibly the December meeting?
Right.
We could do both in that meeting. The ZRC meets when?
The second Thursday in November.
Second Thursday in November.
So they've gotten some different definitions for spite fence already from the attorney.
Yes, there was a spite definition that Steve Cole had, but the attorney has already said it looks a little bit complicated and it may not fly, you know, under some kind of legal challenge. So then there's a modified definition that they want to address. So again, like anything else.
Surprise, surprise.
It's going to take a little bit more doing, but at least we're focused on it, and they're on the right track.
I don't want to hold the whole fencing up for months just to get that.
No, but I'll report back to them that it'll be coordinated.
Well, let's see if they can come back to us after their November meeting. That would be the 13th, November 13, and they can send us the outcome of that meeting, okay? And we'll plan to put it on the agenda for the, it's just after our meeting, too.
Put it out for the December meeting.
The December business meeting, second Tuesday of the month.
Very good.
Okay, thank you. That's been a long time coming, hasn't it? Okay, and I have asked you if you would bring that communication. I understand that the Hoffman property received site plan approval at the, is that right? At the last meeting, or you were not at the planning board meeting?
I heard that that was, that was a rumor I heard.
Yeah, I heard that it was, too.
I didn't read that in the minutes of the planning board.
Okay, so.
It was, I think, two days ago.
The one that, the one that happened Monday night, was what I understood. Maybe we should clarify that.
I have Michelle, they get site plan approval.
I'm not sure whether it was site plan approval or what did they?
I thought that's what she said. In any event, we have the letter from Richard Wrang asking us to follow up, addressing the TND code. And have you given any more discussion to this?
Well, yeah, I mean, we've talked about it, and it's been referred to Michelle, but because of a personal loss in her family, she's really not been working, able to work on it.
Okay.
So I don't think she's due back in the town till the end of this week.
Okay.
So I would hope.
So we'll table this until you can meet with her and.
But I believe she did have an answer to those recommendations.
She did tell me she did, and she won't be home till this weekend.
Good, okay, so I'm just going to make a note that this will be deferred to the planner.
She already has that information.
Okay, all right. And there were maps, et cetera, attached to that.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's all I have. Is there any other discussion? Does anyone have anything else tonight? I'm sorry, Teresa, of course. I didn't, I didn't have any notes from you.
No, I don't have any notes. You did list the dump truck. We did list the dump truck with the absolute auction website.
Oh, okay.
And they're expected to get back to me with a start date, and we hope to put that up on the town website.
Okay.
Because the auction is open to the public, and it will run for seven to 10 days, and there will be in the listing an inspection period where people can come who are interested and look at the drop. So shortly, I'll have the information.
Okay, good. Maybe in time for the next meeting?
It will be before the next meeting.
Okay, so it'll go right to the website?
Yes.
Good.
And they can call the Highway Department to see if it's been listed. We can give them the information.
Okay.
So if this is aired on Monday, then we expect the auction to be starting next week, hopefully, so.
Good, good. Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. And Scott, I didn't have anything in writing from you. Do you want to make any kind of a report, given...
Well, just real quick, you may see some people run around town with tape measures and the like. They're continuing our data collection efforts. They do have ID, and there should be a sticker on their car. You can ask them for what they're doing. They've been concentrating mostly in the village this week, and will continue throughout the town in the coming weeks, so don't be alarmed. They're supposed to be there. And that was, oh, and if anybody wants to update, any commercial business owners want to update their financial information that I have on file from the last survey we sent out, by all means, send it in. It would certainly help us to value your property. Thank you.
Thank you. Rose, after all that budget, do you have anything you'd like to say other than few? Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment before we break?
I have one announcement that I forgot to make at the beginning.
Okay.
November 1 is a great day in Red Hook. It's the, it's the chocolate festival in the village of Red Hook all day long, and the various store shops will be, have various items of chocolate. And unbeknownst to me, I suddenly got an email that I'm one of the judges, and I have no idea, although I, I am a chocoholic.
Well, you should know your chocolate, then.
I can stand in for you if you can't make it.
That would be...
I'll volunteer.
More painful to me or you.
I'll enjoy chocolate myself.
Okay. Good. I can't think of anything we've forgotten. I did forget to say that Election Day is November 4, and it's an important one, and we hope that everyone will remember November 4. The polls will be open here and elsewhere, and you can, is it all right if I tell them to contact the Town Clerk for the polling place if they need to know it?
Absolutely. We'll help them find it.
Okay. So Sue McCann, Town Clerk, will be happy to answer any questions about your polling place if you feel that your polling place has changed or you're not sure of your polling place.
Residents can actually go online to the Board of Elections.
Yes, they have.
And if they have a computer and do the research, it's very simple, a couple of questions they ask. But if you don't have a computer, come on in. We've helped people hundreds of times find out where they need to go to vote. And that's from 6:00 to 9:00, 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much. So I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session now to discuss matters of personnel and hiring in particular. And is there a second? We'll be coming back out fairly quickly, we hope.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
We'll just take it to the Fairly Court Day House.